Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Kochman, the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome to tonight's meeting of September fourteenth. We open each meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. We are in a remote and in-person hybrid kind of model here, so I'm going to call the roll because there are folks that are present from the board that are actually not here in person. So I'll go up. Frank?
Present.
Steve?
Present.
Michael?
Here.
Alexandria?
Here.
Thank you. Ellen?
Yes.
Alan and Ron are both, well, I'll ask the eye in the sky. No Alan, no Ron, right? Not expecting them, so they're absent and I am present. Next item is I do some announcements and procedures, a little bit about COVID. Just buckle in. I need to read this each, at each meeting. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section eighteen, and the Governor's July second, two thousand and twenty order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting as supplemented by June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, Chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-one. This meeting at Town of North Andover will be conducted via a hybrid, a hybrid scenario with members of the board in space. They can be heard and are being recorded. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public, which there is none. This is posted as an in-person meeting. Pledge with a written requirement to attend this meeting can be found at the Town of North Andover website, www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting only, we're gonna skip that. Tune into northandovergovcam Comcast Channel eight or Verizon Channel twenty-six or online www.northandovercam.org. A copy of all applications supporting documents are on file in the Zoning Board of Appeals, one twenty Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, and may be viewed on the Town of North Andover website at www.northandoverma.gov. For every, just for everybody, my experience over the last year and a half or so doing this, however long it's been, is that every element of remote participation or remote meetings has been unsatisfying. It's been cumbersome. It's been a pain in the neck, but it's the best that we have and we need, we do not want the wheels of progress to come to a screeching halt over the pandemic, so therefore we have worked the best we can under the circumstances. As a reminder, some of this is phone lines. There's a Google meeting happening for the remote folks. So therefore, this is being reported. This is being recorded. It is, as a reminder, a public meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals. And then a couple of matters of procedure, which is oftentimes helpful to introduce the public to in order to demystify certain votes of the board, certain procedures. All motions by the board are made in the affirmative. That means that the motion is made to grant the relief or grant the motion or grant whatever it is. Motions are not made to reject or disapprove any matters. This does not necessarily signal the board's disposition on anything. It is merely a matter of procedure. All votes are made in the affirmative. Furthermore, variants in special permit matters all require a supermajority to pass. If five members are present and voting, such as tonight, we have more than five present, a matter needs four votes to pass. If there are only four members present and voting, then the matter needs all four votes to pass. Anything fewer than four in a matter is rejected or requires a two-year waiting period for refiling. So slightly more complicated than that, but that's the, that's the flavor of what happens. With that, my announcements are out of the way and we move to the agenda. Item number two is the acceptance of the minutes. If there is no discussion, then we'll hear a motion.
I don't see my name listed as a member at the last meeting.
As present?
Yes.
I certainly don't, don't recollect, but that is, that is a change. You were here?
Yes.
All right. So with, with that addition, which Jennifer can make outside of the meeting, are there any other comments or questions on the minutes? If not, then maybe we have a motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Thank you. Frank, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Steve, motion made and seconded. Since we are again in a hybrid scenario, I will go up the, actually, I'll go down. I'm gonna cross these out. Hold on just a second. Alan? And Ron? So we're going to need two associates on this vote, Jen? Do you, do you have a wheel? Who's?
Michael, Steve.
All right, then let's go up the roll. Steve?
This is just an approval of the minutes.
With the addition that you made.
And so for?
Thank you. Michael?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Alexandria?
Aye.
I am an aye, so the, the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is number four, or number three, which is an informational presentation and overview of the proposed redevelopment of Royal Crest Estates, one and twenty-eight Royal Crest Drive. Michael Lozano, Vice President of Development, will be presenting. Just a quick announcement to give this some context of the extent that it needs it. The, this is strictly informational. It's informational for the zoning board as, as one of the land use boards in the town to try to get their arms around what is currently happening, what is currently concepted. This is obviously a public meeting, and so therefore it is for public consumption. There will be no public participation at this because there is no application actually before the board. This is strictly informational. Our expectation is that this is going to be a little bit less than half an hour, maybe a lot less. Depends on how quickly the presentation goes through or how hot the benches here with questions. So with, with that, as long as, as long as anybody at the table is clear?
Should we save our questions for the end or do we wanna?
I think, I think that's wise for now. Let's let, let Michael get through the presentation and then we'll, we'll do our thing. Any other questions, comments? Alexandria, Ellen, always chime in. I know you're never afraid.
Thanks, folks. Never.
All right, with that, could we get an introduction of yourself?
Sure. My name's Michael Lozano. As you noted, I'm a Vice President of Development with Trinity Financial, based in Boston. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I am here to present to this, this body an introduction to what we've been working on with Royal Crest Estates, an existing property in North Andover. So I'm gonna go through this presentation. Just note, we are very early days in this. We've been actually working at it for quite some time, and in fact, we've been before the planning board for nearly a year. Even with that said, we are still out, you know, speaking to the community, speaking to boards such as yours and, and listening. We are absolutely listening. We're very excited about this project and I'll get through all of the great things that we think that this brings to North Andover. But, but again, these are early days. So with that, I will get into the presentation. Let's see. Yep, there you go. Little bit of a hiccup with the presentation, but let's see if it will reboot, if you will. I don't know what happened with the formatting. I would suggest downloading it. Sometimes Google's rendering of a PDF is not. Yeah, it has a little bit of difficulty. Well, if you could assist with that, I can kinda get through some. So I'll start with the existing condition. So as I noted, this Royal Crest Estates is an existing property. A lot of people don't know what it is. It is an existing multifamily residential site adjacent to Merrimack College on Route one fourteen. It's a very large site. It's approximately seventy-seven acres, which is one of the largest privately owned parcels of land in the Town of North Andover. Within the site is over fifty-five buildings spread throughout the seventy-seven acres. It was built originally in nineteen seventy and it had very little planning, not a lot of logic. Many of the existing buildings encroach into no-build zones as it relates to the Conservation Commission, Conservation Bylaw of the Town of, of North Andover, as well as buffers. They encroach pretty closely to the existing, existing property lines and close to the surrounding neighborhoods. There's poor vehicular and pedestrian circulation today. There's lots of impermeable paving. There's very poor drainage on the site today, and I'll get into the existing infrastructure is not really great. There's not a lot of, of a sense of place there today. Thank you. I think that's back. Perfect. Yeah, all good. Yeah. So as I mentioned, so the existing property is fifty years old. It's over fifty years old at this point. The existing buildings are, they're, they're comfortable. They've, you know, they've, they've been comfortable. They've been livable. They've been great places to live for people for many, many years, but they are approaching the end of their useful life. The existing buildings are outdated. There's very little, in fact, there's no handicap accessibility today. The, the buildings do not have much in the way of environmental sustainability. Windows are outdated, doors are outdated. In fact, the buildings currently are heated by conductive electric baseboard heaters, not a very energy-efficient way to heat the buildings. The hot, domestic hot water is provided by buried propane tanks. So you can imagine that that's not up to current standards. So we, we've come to the conclusion that Royal Crest needs something new. It needs a new vision, and we've taken this opportunity to, you know, see what we could plan that could be, you know, the next phase of that property. So, you know, our vision statement is that the new Royal Crest will create a vibrant new community and provide numerous benefits to North Andover and beyond. You know, specifically, Royal Crest is tired. It's at the end of its useful life. What we're planning moves beyond just a single use of rental apartments, but it introduces a mix of some new retail, which I'll get into, some hospitality, what we're talking about, a boutique hotel, some office space and different types of residential, which I'll get into. The new Royal Crest, as we envision it, preserves open space and provides new recreational opportunities for the surrounding areas, as well as the people who will live at Royal Crest. As I noted, the parcel is, is directly across the street from Merrimack College. There's nearly nine hundred students that attend Merrimack that live at Royal Crest today. So we're working directly with Merrimack College to accommodate some of their growth, but also deal with the student body as it exists at Royal Crest today. It provides additional public benefits for North Andover, particularly over five point seven million dollars as we are projecting an additional tax revenue. And lastly, we spent, you know, as I mentioned, over a year conducting an extensive outreach process. We've met, we've had over a hundred meetings so far with groups, large and small. We've met with individuals in their kitchens. We've met with some groups over a hundred and just about everything in between. We've been answering questions. We've been listening. We're trying to take everybody's thoughts into consideration as we build up this plan, and this is a continuation of that process. So to give you an overview of the plan, we, we organized our master plan. Our design team has organized our master plan around three primary elements. We've created what we're calling a Newtown Green, which is a two and, two and a half acre, over two and a half acre public green space, park space at the center of the property. We've created and preserved a wide buffer around the entire perimeter of the site in order to keep what, you know, our buildings focused inward and away from the neighborhoods surrounding the site. And we're preserving the wetlands. There's a number of wetlands around the perimeter of the site. As I mentioned, we're preserving and in fact, we're expanding upon those wetlands, which I'll get into. So these are some images that sort of, you know, talk about what we're trying to create here. So these are some precedent images of other projects, of other buildings, kinda speaking about the architecture and the types of spaces that we're trying to create around this town green. So the town green is, is highlighted by a new boutique New England-style hotel that we're proposing. It's a, it's a hundred, it's proposed to be a hundred and two rooms in this hotel and really is meant to be, you know, a focal point of the project. This hotel is, is, you know, modeled on other successful New England-style inns throughout, throughout Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut. You know, within these images is the Viking Hotel in Newport, for example, the Williamstown Inn in, in Williamstown, Massachusetts, and, and the, the Hanover Inn in Hanover, New Hampshire. Again, most of these are sort of college-adjacent hotels within smaller New England towns. We kind of are using that as a model for our plan. We also utilized some other sort of successful mixed-use developments as sort of a inspiration for, for our project. Stores Connecticut is one in particular that we found inspirational for us, and it was a very successful project that introduced, you know, residential with some retail adjacent to the University of Connecticut. So that's one that we found was a, a good model for us as we, we built up our plan. Some of the following slides show some images of our proposal. So this is a view that looks over, again, what we're calling the town green, towards this boutique hotel. On the right is one of the mixed-use residential buildings that we're proposing. On the left is a dedicated, purpose-built student housing facility that we'd be building in partnership with Merrimack College. But you can see sort of the spaces that we're talking about. We're, we're trying to, you know, create some exciting public spaces while accommodating these new uses on the site. And again, just trying to give some, some, some flavor to what we're talking about. These are again precedent images that show the type of architecture, the type of buildings that we're, that we're proposing that our, that our design team has experienced in designing and building. But these are the types of buildings, the scale of buildings that we're talking about, and these are precedent images. So again, that was the, the Hanover Inn in, in Hanover, New Hampshire. This is the Hotel Viking in, in Newport, Rhode Island. So I'll just briefly touch on the student ha, housing aspect that I was mentioning. So as I, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, there's approximately eight to nine hundred Merrimack College students who reside at Royal Crest today. Merrimack College rents units directly from Aimco, sort of under a master lease, and a number of students rent directly from the current owner, Aimco, today. What is being proposed, and right now, those students are living throughout the site. There's not a whole lot of structure. There's not a lot of supervision. There are challenges related to that. The students could use, could use some more supervision and some more structure. As part of that, we're proposing some purpose-built student housing within the site that we would be building in partnership with Merrimack College. This particular facility is envisioned to be a thousand beds in apartment-style units that would equal approximately two hundred and fifty apartments. It's, it's, you know, designed to be, you know, line up essentially with Merrimack's campus across the street and provide safe access across the Route one fourteen, which I can get into.
So is it, should we be, should you be pointing it out?
Yeah, so it's, it's the, the blue buildings within the master plan here. So you can see they're highlighted with the red dashed lines. And this is just some imagery showing what we're envisioning the student housing facility to look like as it interacts with sort of our, our town green element at the center of the site. And again, these are some precedent images that are similar to them. Obviously, they're not exactly like what we're proposing, but they're similar. It's similar to what we're proposing. This is purpose-built student housing with retail on the ground floors, built in Columbus, Ohio for Ohio State University, and this was designed by our architect, Elkes Manfredi Architects, based in Boston. And again, these are some other images of the student housing that's, that's built for Ohio State University. And a slightly different model, but again, by our architect. This is at the New England Institute of Technology in Warwick, Rhode Island, but a little bit more traditional architectural style, but again, purpose-built student housing. You know, the, the housing is, this particular housing is built more for, for a more conducive environment for the students to learn. It has a direct supervision of the students. There's, you know, onsite security. There's centralized entry and exit from the building. It has some onsite dining facilities. In, in general, you know, it makes for a more conducive sort of live-learn environment for the students than exist there today. So these are just some images. So like I was mentioning, today, today, the existing Royal Crest is five hundred and eighty-eight apartments, which a lot of people don't know. Those five hundred and eighty-eight apartments again are spread out across fifty-five different buildings. They are all two- and three-bedroom apartments. There are no smaller apartments that exist there today. So what we are proposing is a more diverse set of housing options. So we're introducing, again, some multifamily residential apartments, but we're also, we're, we're introducing smaller apartments. Today, you know, the market for apartment living is a lot different than it was in nineteen seventy. So we're introducing a large number of one-bedroom apartments. We will still have some two-bedroom units and a smaller number of three-bedroom units, but generally, we're creating, we may be creating more units, but they'll generally be smaller. So we're not creating that many more bedrooms, per se. We are introducing some age-restricted senior housing on the site that would be in a step, separate standalone building, sort of designed and operated specific to the needs of, of a, of a more aged population. And we're also introducing a townhouse-style element of homeownership units on the site. So again, we're diversifying the types of housing that are on the site to, to, to really meet the needs of a, a, a much wider range of households in North Andover. And, you know, both Aimco, the current owner of the site, and Trinity takes a lot of pride in the amenities that we offer our residents. You know, these are envisioned to be high-end, very, very livable apartment communities, townhouse communities, senior living communities. So we build our amenity packages to meet the needs of all those different groups who will be living in the community as we see it today. So these are just some images of the types of spaces that we provide. Again, the needs of today are different than they were from fifty years ago. So this gives us an opportunity to really re-envision these, these, these spaces and provide, provide something pretty exciting. And we're also introducing some retail, some retail. Not a lot of retail, like it's about seventy-five thousand square feet of retail, which if you know, like a Market Basket, for example, or a large Wegman supermarket, those are well over a hundred thousand square feet for that use. Seventy-five thousand square feet is more about neighborhood, you know, focused retail. But we're really excited about it, and we're really excited about it because it brings something, an element to this community, as well as the surrounding neighborhoods that we think will be, will be in high demand. One thing that we've been talking about is like a boutique sort of grocery store that might exist in one of the spaces, restaurants, and in particular, a cafe. Today, you know, I was mentioning, there's, there's not a lot of pedestrian orientation to the site today. If you wanna get a cup of coffee, you gotta get in your car. You gotta drive down the street. What we're proposing with, with this plan is something much more pedestrian-oriented. You can walk downstairs from the building that you live in or walk across the street to the cafe that's across the street from the building that you live in. You can get a cup of coffee and you can, you know, you can relax in the town green next door. So we think that that's something really exciting. We've spent a lot of time working with our design team to make sure that the landscape, again, this is not just about the buildings. We wanna make this, and it's not just about cars. This is, you know, we want this to be a place that people can enjoy. They can walk around. They can, you know, get outside of their apartments, their housing units and, you know, and, and live. And our team has spent a lot of time designing the public spaces at the street level to make sure that, you know, pedestrians are, are accommodated. So we've, you know, we've spent a lot of time on our landscape plans, preserving the wetlands, preserving the buffer around the edge of the site, but also providing some recreational opportunities. Our plan right now calls for approximately one point five mile-long walking trail around the perimeter of the site that connects into all of the infrastructure, sort of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure that's planned for the surrounding area. And these are some images that sort of show that as we, you know, this, this walking trail would cut through some of the existing wetland areas. They would, again, preserve some of the natural areas on the site, give people some opportunity to be outdoors and to sort of experience some of that while, while also providing some other environmental benefits. I mentioned that the existing drainage and stormwater infrastructure is, is quite poor today and was never designed adequately. So this gives us the opportunity to completely rebuild that. So our design team has spent a ton of time and effort to design not only the underground infrastructure, but to utilize sort of rain gardens and other green features that, you know, frankly, are, are nice landscape elements, but also provide some real benefits as far as the stormwater management. And again, here are some images that, that give you an idea of what we're talking about there. And some other images of the walking trail and sort of the natural areas, the preservation of green space that we're talking about. There's a lot of very nice existing trees on the site. We're gonna preserve hundreds, hundreds of them. And, and in addition to that, our plan calls for the planting of over seven hundred and fifty new trees, all native species, all trees that would be, you know, that would be well-cared-for and, and complimentary to the, to the tree canopy of North Andover. And I mentioned earlier, and I'll try to go through this quickly to, you know, save some time for, for questions. Energy efficiency and sustainability is, is a really big deal for us. As I mentioned, the existing buildings are very outdated in that respect. Our new buildings, in short, will be state-of-the-art. So we're, we're, we're discussing and planning to build these buildings, essentially. So we're, we're, we're discussing and planning to build these buildings essentially as all-electric with VRF systems, if you know that, as far as VRF HVAC systems. We've, Trinity and Aimco have, have tremendous experience utilizing both LEEDs and other, LEED and other environmental sustainability programs to build our communities. We expect the same here as we, as we design these buildings and, and vastly improve the energy efficiency and sustainability. And this is a, I'll just briefly touch on this, but one aspect of our, of our project, we are looking to utilize Chapter 40B. So I'll get into some of the specifics of that. Some of the benefits of one of the reasons why we're looking at utilizing a friendly, quote, "friendly" Chapter 40B approach is it will enable the town to exceed its 10% threshold requirement under Massachusetts Chapter 40B, giving local control back to the town for future proposals contemplating 40B. It will provide a significant contribution to the town's workforce and affordable housing stock. The portion of the project that we are looking to utilize Chapter 40B for is 385 units. Of those 385 units, 97 will be affordable. It allows the project to work within the existing framework of the town's wetlands bylaw, and it provides more than the required proposed mitigations for any wetlands impact that we might have. And it allows us to work together with the town on the permitting process through a comprehensive permit and address any concerns that might arise as we work through that process. So those are just some of the, the highlights. I can get into any specifics about that as we go into questions. And I'm sure I'll be back before this board to, to discuss that more in depth as we get a little bit further down, down the process. And lastly, I'll just recap quickly. So I mean, the, you know, what we're proposing here replaces an outdated, an outdated property with a well-planned and exciting new neighborhood. It vastly improves the environmental sustainability of the site, meets many aspects of the town's master plan. In fact, the master, the town's master plan implementation committee did do a study on our proposal and found that our proposal meets many, many, many aspects of the town's master plan. It enables the town to exceed its 10% threshold requirement under Chapter 40B. It activates and makes safer Route 114, which I could get into if, if, with as much detail as this board wants. I'm sure we'll talk about that. It maintains traffic capacity and flow, and we have had an engineered traffic study done that has been peer-reviewed, so we're happy to answer any questions on that. And the new Royal Crest contributes a very substantial new amount of tax revenue to the town, which has also been studied by fiscal consultants and peer-reviewed by the town. So I'll pause there. I've been talking for a long time, so I'm sure that there are questions. This was, I tried to, to capture a lot in a short amount of time, and I want to be respectful of the board's time. So there's a lot more details that I could go into, but I'll, I'll stop there and answer any questions.
Yeah, there are, I'm sure there are a million details that, you know, just the, the four people present, the two people up above could, could dive into. And same as you, I need to be respectful of the balance of the meeting because we've got a handful of other applicants and other business to conduct. Nonetheless, so with, with that said, you are here to answer some questions, to make the presentation, answer some questions from the board. I'd just like to remind the board members that we're trying to keep a relatively short lease just on the timing, not necessarily the questions themselves or the details, but it would be helpful if we could do bite-sized chunks here rather than go into the huge, like, policy elements of things. So discreet, by discreet, I don't mean secret. I mean narrow targets would be, I think, appropriate at this point. A table stakes question. If we could go back to a site plan, Michael, you had mentioned a handful of uses, you know, the, the, the town green in the center with the boutiques. I think I missed, any, any of them actually, frankly, is going to be fine because you've got, got a whole bunch of colors there.
Yeah, yeah.
So I hear you loud and clear that the, the purple is the boutique, the, the current concept. As we're looking at this plan, the purple is Boutique Hotel. The blue and the, and the teal or whatever that is, it looks like it's the student housing.
That's correct.
Behind that is a variety of different kinds of housing. I think there are going to be townhomes on that, on that side.
That's correct, yes.
And then to the, to the east here, the yellow and the orange, I think I, I missed it. I may have been writing down. What are the yellow and the orange in the bottom right?
Yeah, so the orange, the orange is the Chapter 40B component, which would be multifamily residential apartments.
All right.
The other buildings sort of adjacent to it in yellow are unrestricted, essentially replacement multifamily residential apartments for the existing Royal Crest. So that zone is, is residential apartments. Building G1, which is the smaller yellow building, is envisioned to be the, the age-restricted senior housing. And then the, the purple building furthest to the east is a new, about 125,000-square-foot office building.
Okay. H2, a parking lot?
That's correct, yes. So that's a parking garage, two, a three-story parking garage serving the office building.
Understood, okay. I'll get out of the way. Any questions from the, from the board?
So I have a bunch.
I have a bunch too, sorry.
No, go for it. I'll let you go first.
Thank you. And so why are you doing a 40B? Why is the reasoning that you have to do a 40B or friendly 40B?
So technically, technically, there are three isolated wetlands within that zone. These wetlands have been flagged by the, the Conservation Commission of North Andover. They are currently essentially just depressions and stormwater management. They're not really contributing in any way. The, the town's bylaw, the town's conservation bylaw is very specific about how you can deal with those wetlands in that you cannot affect or fill in more than 5,000 square feet of wetlands, in any case. That's if the parcel is half an acre or if the parcel is 77 acres, like this one. So one of the reasons, one of the reasons why we're looking at utilizing a 40B is that we could utilize a comprehensive permit to work with the Conservation Commission to deal with those wetlands by expanding the wetlands to the rear of the site. In fact, we'd be mitigating the loss of those wetlands by building more than twice the area of wetlands and connecting some, some of those wetlands together. That will make them function more properly. But it would give us some relief of the, of the conservation bylaws that relates to that. In addition, again, as I mentioned, currently, the town of North Andover is under the, the state's mandate of 10% subsidized housing. This particular project, as it's been structured, will get the town of North Andover over 10% comfortably.
I just, and I just have one more question and let the board decide. Have other people do it. So just quickly, I'm a huge component of the before and after because I don't see before on here. I just see the after. So number one, are you doing any demo? And number two, you have 588 apartments. And what is going to be the end of that? So, and how much is going to be Merrimack College? Because it seems this is catering to Merrimack, not to the town of North Andover?
So the, so I'll, I'll start with, so here are some images of the existing. On the upper left is the, is an image of the existing property. So again, it's 77, approximately 77 acres with 55 buildings spread throughout. The buildings are typically 12 to 18 units each in sort of this older Tudor style. These particular buildings, they, there's a lot of asbestos in them currently. It's all safe, it's all encapsulated. We've looked at the possibility of renovating these buildings. Because of their sort of current state, it's a near impossibility to renovate these buildings. So we've been looking at, you know, what we can do with a new plan, a new plan here for, for, for Royal Crest. The Merrimack College piece is a relatively small piece, but it's a very important piece of, of the, of the project. It's, again, it's to accommodate mostly the existing students that live at Royal Crest without a lot of structure and sort of provide some structure for those students in a purpose-built dorm facility of about a thou, of, of 1,000 beds. Overall, we're proposing the, the equivalent, including that Merrimack College facility, of 1,309 units. So it replaces the existing Royal Crest units. It introduces some new diverse housing types. It provides a facility for Merrimack and all of the other uses that I talked about.
So that's a yes to demo, demoing the whole site?
Yes, yes, over time, over time. And it's expected to be an approximately eight-to-10-year project over time.
And you're going from 588 to 1390 total units?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Ellen.
First of all, a follow-up. Is the roughly 1,000 beds for Merrimack, is that exclusive of the 385 units?
It is, yes. So it would be a separate, yeah.
385, and then there's the 1,000 beds for Merrimack.
Yeah, so in the blue and teal building to the left of this image, that's the Merrimack College, you know, student housing facility. That's, that's 1,000 beds, 250 equivalent apartment units. The orange buildings, that's the 385 units I was speaking to.
Okay. Okay, then one other quick question. Just the projections on, okay, early on, you had 5.7 million in tax revenue?
Yes, yes.
Where, how is that being generated? Where's it coming from?
Yeah, so that's coming from the overall program that's proposed here. So we've, we've done extensive studies with a fiscal consultant who has done sort of a projection look at the full build-out as it's proposed here. He's looked at it as it would be built out over time in phases. He has projected what the costs will be as it's related to this entire proposal. He's looked at the existing costs and the existing revenue of Royal Crest.
Not to interrupt you, but just to cut it short. So the 5.7 is eight to 10 years down the road?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the last question is, what is the current tax revenue from Royal Crest to the town today?
It's approximately 1.2 million.
All right, thank you.
And the five point, just to be clear, the 5.7 in eight years is an annual number? That's not a cumulative?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
So procedurally, just because we would probably from this see the 40B, what, what does that look like? Because I'm, I'm used to us getting a proposal for a property and, you know, we're considering the whole property and it's, because the whole thing is a 40B development.
Yes, yes.
So is this going to be split into lots and we look at one particular lot? Is it going to be, do we do this thing holistically? How is that going to look?
So the way it's envisioned now is that we are proposing with the town to create a new overlay district for this parcel. This is similar to the Osgood property where there was a 40R district at one time that obviously has, and I'm sure people know that that has changed over time, but this is roughly equivalent or similar to that. And in fact, you know, we're sort of utilizing that 40R district as a sort of a model for the potential zoning that could go into place here. That would be, that, that new zoning overlay district will be voted on at town meeting. So we're working, you know, again, long process, long process. We've been working very closely with the planning board and presenting all the different aspects to them to make sure that they understand what we are proposing. Eventually, should we be fortunate that this would go forward, the zoning overlay district would go before town meeting and be voted on there, at which time it would be enacted. And then we would go back to the planning board for each of the elements as it's proposed here. So there would be another bite at the apple. So each of the elements would have to undergo a full development project review. And the 40B element, as we've discussed it today, would go before you for your review approval.
Right, I guess my question is though, when we, when we see it, are we, you know, will there be basically a lot just for here? And that's all we're talking about?
Essentially.
Or will it be the whole thing and, and we end up discussing that as a big piece?
So it's a complicated answer because it's really both. It's really both. So the town will be approving as part of the overlay district, a master plan. This is the master plan. So the master plan will be, you know, enumerate all of these elements. It'll enumerate how tall the buildings can be. It'll enumerate the total number of units and the uses. If we were to deviate from that, we would have to go back to either the planning board or to town meeting. But to answer your, the second part of your question, that particular piece would, you would be, you, this body, would be dealing just with that particular piece.
And I want to keep my questions few for the interest of the board, but, you know, you wanted, you said you wanted to make this a pedestrian-oriented experience. Has there been coordination with public transit authorities in terms of improving that? Because I know like North Andover does not have much public transit really available to it at this point.
There has been, there has been. In fact, we've, we've met with the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority. They and we are aligned in wanting to get public transit integrated into this plan. We see there being a great opportunity. We've also been working closely with MassDOT. And you may or may not know that MassDOT is planning a major, major corridor improvement project for Route 114. So we, MVRTA and MassDOT have been working together to integrate, you know, transit stops within our property. So there's, there's essentially the beginnings of an agreement that there would be one or two transit stops within the property that would connect to an existing transit line of, of the Regional Transit Authority, as well as a, as a bus line that will provide direct one-seat access to Boston. So we've been working on that and we're really excited about it, honestly. So yes.
Since, since you were talking a little bit about access ingress, there appear to be one, two, three, four curb cuts, for lack of a better word, on 114. Are those ingress and egress all?
Yes, so currently, currently, there's pretty, I should say, significantly outdated ingress and egress to the site. There's one signalized intersection at the bypass, at the 125 Andover bypass. MassDOT, as I was mentioning, MassDOT is planning a major corridor improvement project. As part of that project, they're completely reconfiguring that intersection as well as providing a new signalized intersection to the main entrance to this plan. And we've been working closely with them to coordinate our plan with their plans to make sure that, exactly.
Right here.
Right there.
That's the main entrance.
That's exact.
This is where, roughly where the current entrance is.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right. So they're, they're planning a brand-new intersection at those two, at those two locations. Our main ingress and egress would be at those two locations. There's right turn in and out at the two sort of interim locations here.
Thank you.
Is the name of it going to be New, New Royal Crest?
It will likely not be that. That is sort of a placeholder right now, but...
That's enough, that's enough of an answer, that's all. The town green, is that just going to be a lawn? It's going to be activated in some way? Do you, what were, sort of thoughts on that?
Yeah, so we do, we do expect it to be activated. We want to provide enough of a green space that, you know, you want to play frisbee, you want to have a gathering. It's, it's enough, but we don't want it to just be a passive space. We also have heard a lot of feedback about preserving as many of the existing trees, which are pretty nice in a lot, a lot of cases. That's one of the locations where we'll, we'll, we'll really preserve some of the existing trees. That'll frame that space. The, the, most of the retail that I was talking about fronts that green space, so it'll kind of spill out onto it. We expect sort of restaurants to have outdoor dining, again.
Another question I was going to ask, because I, the plan doesn't show where the retail is. I was assuming it's in the base of some of those buildings.
That's right, that's right. So it is.
So where would, where would the parking be?
So the parking is typically, in most locations here, provided in parking garage. Parking structures buried within the buildings. The retail parking.
So you have some on-street and, but, and then it's public parking in, under, below grade?
Exactly. That's exactly right, that's right. Not, not below grade, there, there are above-grade parking structures.
First level?
Within, within the buildings.
Okay. Do, would the surrounding neighborhoods have any pedestrian access to the site? Or maybe they don't want that?
They will absolutely have access to the site at 114. So that, that infrastructure is going to be completely rebuilt and the surrounding neighborhoods will have access from there. We've heard a lot of feedback from the surrounding neighborhoods that they don't want direct connections. We've gone back and forth about that. We, we have the opportunity where, that we could provide that connection if it was, if we were directed to. We're happy to do what the town wants us to do in that respect.
I can see they might want a, a one-way access.
Yes, yes. We have.
I was jogging in that area this morning and I thought it would have been nice if you could, you know, if you go to one and a half mile loop, if you could go connect to that, do that, and then get back in the road.
We, we agree, we agree, but we also want to be very, we want to be very respectful of our, of our neighbors. We are providing a pedestrian access to the crossroads, shopping center to the east here, which we're continuing to work out sort of details on that.
So in the construction phasing, you'd keep some of the buildings, existing buildings occupied while you work in other specific areas on the site?
That is correct, yes.
So you don't have to do all the site, like, all the site work and site infrastructure, drainage, doesn't all have to be done at once? You can do it incrementally?
That is exactly correct, yes. So our, our engineering team has sort of mapped out five phases in total, where, you know, you know, first phase of buildings would be, you know, demolished, new buildings built.
So, so what, like, do you know which would be like the order of phases? Is it going to be the dorms or the?
Yeah, so it's, it's generally the front of the site as it fronts onto 114. So the student housing facility and the 40B would be first. And then we would move, essentially move back in the site as we go on. So we would finish, we'd demolish and finish those buildings first, and then we would move again towards the back of the site.
Okay. And you, did you say there's going to be a mix of ownership and rental residential units?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the stuff up in the corner there is the ownership.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Thanks, Frank. Alexandria, any thoughts? All right, perhaps, perhaps not.
Sorry, couldn't get myself unmuted. No, I, I was just taking it in and listening to the questions you guys have, and I think, you know, side note, I think it's, it's a great concept and a great idea. I think it's probably a lot larger than, I guess maybe I would like, and I think I know, you know, more people in the community, but obviously that's more an issue down the road.
Understood.
I have one more question, just real quick. So the, the town green area, when I think of a town green, I think of something that's like a true communal space that, like, organizations can use and stuff like that. Like, are, you know, Town Common, you can, you can reserve the space through the, through the select board and things like that. What, who controls that? How would that be done? Like, what, you know, obviously this is like real early, but like, that, that seems like a, a, a kind of vital piece to how, how that is a community space.
Yeah, I, we, we envision it as a true community space. So, I mean, there, there, it, it will be open to the public and there are opportunities for, for people outside of this particular community to use that space.
Thank you, Michael. So I'm going to bring this kind of to a conclusion. I want to get on with the rest of the balance of the evening's business. Perhaps you could articulate just a little bit, what are the next public steps? Are there, are there any public hearings on the calendar? Are there a series of meetings regarding, you know, the, the 40R? What, you know, what do we have in front of us?
Not yet, not yet. So we are still, again, it's still early days. So, but we are meeting regularly with the planning board. So more or less, at every regular planning board meeting, we are presenting a new element to them in detail so that they can look at it, they can give us feedback, and they can make sure that they are satisfied about, you know, what our design team is putting, you know, as they put pen to paper, that they're satisfied with what, what we are proposing. We are projecting to go before the town formally sometime, perhaps in the, in the, in the winter and in the spring, but again, we're still working through sort of the overall schedule. So there's really nothing formal at this moment. We're continuing to, to have meetings like this, to introduce the concept to people, to get feedback. But we do, you know, envision us moving forward in the next, next six months or so.
Appreciate that very much. With that then, you know, anybody who wants to keep up with it, it sounds like just to, just to watch or attend a planning board meeting, you know, they, they occur every couple of weeks. Do you go every couple of weeks or every, every month?
Essentially every couple of weeks, so.
All right. So that is a way for anybody who is here or listening to stay current, is to attend a planning board meeting or at least watch it. And with that, Mr. Lazzano, thank you very much for taking the time. I appreciate your willingness to come before the board and give us an, give us an overview, demystify a few things.
Sure.
Extraordinarily helpful for me at the supermarket, by the way, when people ask what's going on.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
All right, appreciate it, Mr. Lazzano.
Mr. Jim, excuse me, just to confirm, no public comment on this tonight?
That's correct, no public participation. This is just an informational meeting for the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is a, we have a notice of withdrawal. Did they, are they coming tonight, Jen, 45 Russet?
Yes, they should be.
Anyone here from 45 Russet? I'll put a pin in that. 217 Gray Street. Yeah, come, come on up.
Good evening. Again, Brian Vaughn from Smolak &amp; Vaughn for the applicants, Paul and Lilian Miller. Paul's with me tonight, as well as his builder and his wife Lilian. You'll recall the original hearing on this matter. We, we walked you through the site constraints and the issues that we faced. There was a wetland to the rear. I'm not going to go through that in detail again, so as not to waste time. Of course, if there are any questions, just, just ask. But at that hearing, there were comments raised by the board. I think the, the primary issues that were raised were the, the size of, of the structure and the extent of, of the variance for the left-side setback. We took it back to, to the engineering department, so to speak, made some changes to the, the plan to try to maintain the functional utility that, that the owner needs for the structure while trying to address these concerns. Essentially, the, you know, the old structure was 24 feet wide, which is in fact, I guess the, the standard width for a garage, two-car garage, and it was 30 feet in depth. We reduced the footprint to, to 23 feet. The reason we went to 23 feet is that's really about the limit that you can get in, in width and still keep the garage doors wide enough to service the, the larger vehicles, such as like the Suburban that we had discussed before. We shrunk the depth of the structure by a couple of feet. And again, you know, we tried to, to make it as short as we could while still being able to have room for, you know, tractor, snow blower, and the, you know, contents of the sheds that are being moved into this, this structure. And after we, we shrunk the footprint as much as we could, we, we slid it on the lot back towards the, the wetland as close as we could while trying to maintain the, the 75 feet from the, the wetland buffer. And, and the net result is we were able to get the variance, or the setback, I should say, that we were seeking from just over 11 feet back to about 15 feet, which is now 50% of the required 30 feet. We also submitted revised architectural plans, just showing the, the new dimensions and structure. And we, we included a new elevation, which shows the, the facade of the, the garage in comparison to the facade of the existing home. And one of the things we discussed that I think, at the last meeting, but I think that that, that drawing really depicts is just, in terms of the massing and size of the structure, because of the way the, the yard slopes off to the rear, because of the garage under and the front yard being built up, you can see that, that the, the garage structure itself really is not overwhelming. I think it, it, it looks nice and appropriate for the lot. So those are the, the changes that we've proposed. We've submitted the plans and we're happy to entertain any further questions or comments with respect to what we submitted.
I, I just, I don't have these new plans. Was it something that you submitted tonight at the meeting?
No, I, I, we submitted them on September 2nd.
They're, they're part of the packet that I got.
I, I don't have them in my packet.
Yeah, it, it's, you know, the plans are dated May 24th and then revised August 31st.
Ellen, did you, did you get a copy of the, of the memo that we submitted?
Um, I'm looking at it now. No, I don't. Oh, the memo, yes, I'm sorry. Oh, is it, in that, this is my bad.
It should be as an attachment to that.
I'm sorry, my bad. Apologize, I have it right here.
What a relief. Thanks, Ellen.
It would help if I undo the paper clip.
Just, just to restate it, Brian, the specific changes, I think that, what we are hearing you make is that the garage went from 24 by 30 was the original applied, application. And this, this new design is a 23 by 28?
Yeah, right.
Any change in the height?
Uh, no, the, the height has, has not changed. But again, it's, you know, the, the, the area above it is really, it's, it's attic size, if you look at.
Understood. So we've gone, we've gone through them again, just to be clear, and I'm just, just talking out loud, I'm not, I'm not making a judgment one way or the other here, just saying things out loud. So the original, the original plan is a 24 by 30, which is 720 square feet. And the new plan is 23 by 28, which is 644 square feet. That's a, approximately a 10.6% reduction in the footprint. Did I got that right? Okay.
And similarly, just for accounting sake, the, the previous was 11 foot 4 inches setback, and the court, looking at the plans, it's 15 feet now, is the idea?
Yes.
Okay. So we would, we would adjust the variance to, to match that, I would assume, right?
Right. Essentially, we would seek that the, the variance would be greater to be for 15 feet.
So this is, with the moving of the garage now, I'm just, okay, and this is probably not, this is not our bailiwick, it's probably conservation and nature, but I'm just curious. When you, the, the driveway to the garage, will that go between your tree and your existing tuck-under garage, or will that tree be removed?
The tree you're referring to on the left side of the garage?
You have a real beautiful tree right behind your driveway there.
Oh, the one right at the end?
Yes.
Yes, that has to be removed.
Okay.
The, the driveway will go straight into the garage. It's a little skewed that we moved it, but it'll essentially go straight in.
That's unfortunate, because it's a beautiful tree.
We've had some internal discussions about that.
And, and I know we talked about this last time, but, you know, and, and I know the geometry is a little bit challenging here, but if, if the garage was just, you know, another 15 feet to the right, we basically wouldn't be here, right? Like, the, the height wouldn't be an issue, the size wouldn't be an issue, you put whatever you want there, and you wouldn't have a setback problem. And so, you know, I, I, I think, i- i- is there any way you can, you can do that? Because then it just obviates the need to even be here with us.
So, right, and, and this is one of the issues that we talked about last time, is, is that the, the setback from the wetlands, because the way the wetlands curve out, any further movement to the right is then encroaching on the 75-foot, which is the, the, as close as we can get, get to that, that wetland, really? Plus, you have other issues in terms of the, you know, the, the driveway and the architectural designs, I suppose, but.
So the proposed addition and other stuff on the back of the house, is that just, is that as of right, are you go, are you proceeding with that already, or?
Yeah, yes.
I'm looking at the minutes and I can't remember. Did we get input from the neighbor in that, that, you know, there's really only one neighbor that this like really directly impacts? I'm trying to remember, did we get input from that neighbor?
Yeah, they, they had submitted an, an email supporting the, the, the project and the plans, and in fact, that was when it was closer to their property.
I vaguely remember that and I just, I wasn't totally sure because we had three garages last time, so I want to make sure we had the right garage here.
I'm looking up and down the table, Ellen and Alexandria. Comments, thoughts?
I got nothing.
I have nothing. I appreciate the fact that you went to the drawing board and, and adjusted it, made it a little more manageable for the board, well, for me at least.
Thank you both. Anything else? Looking up and down the table, literally, rather than figuratively.
I'm good.
I don't have anything else.
Alexandria or Ellen, do either of you want to be the clerk tonight? To the, if and or when we get to a motion?
Ellen can take that.
No, I'm good. I, I couldn't find the packet, so I can't, I don't have that right there.
All right, then I'm going to nominate Michael, since he's, he's closest to the clerk's chair. So we're not, we're not necessarily there yet, but a few.
Yeah, I may need a copy of the legal notice because I don't seem to have that among my papers, but we can.
That's totally fair.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board for the applicants? Seeing and hearing none, then shall we close public comment? Actually, no, we need to hear from, I need to ask the question. Anybody in the gallery interested in speaking on this matter? Seeing and hearing none, now I'm back to square one. Shall we close public comment and move to deliberations?
I move that we close public comment and move to deliberations.
Thank you, Michael. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Motion made and seconded, again, doing the, oh, boy, not very good at this. I'm going to look at the roll if I can ever find it. Sorry, everybody.
You don't remember my name?
Voting tonight, voting tonight on this one. Jen? We need, we need two of the associates?
Frank and Michael.
Frank and Michael, terrific. Then I'll start there. So on the motion to close public comment and move to deliberations, well, we'll do, start with Frank. The motion is just?
Oh, yes, yes.
Close public comment, move to deliberations?
Yep, I agree.
Thank you, Michael.
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Alexandria?
Aye.
I'm an aye, public comment is closed, we're moving to deliberations. Thoughts from anybody, everybody? Don't rush.
I, I, I don't really have any comments. They seem to have addressed, to the degree they could, the comments that we had previously,
I, I don't really have any comments, they seem to have addressed, to the degree they could, the comments that we had previously, the butters seem to be okay with it, the ones who were most directly affected by it, so...
Thank you, Frank. Anyone else? Thoughts, comments?
I agree with Frank.
I agree with Frank. All right, my, my only comment is, look, it's still, it's, it was a, you know, a pre-historically ginormous garage before, now it's just like, you know, just plain old ginormous. So with that, with that being said, I think we should just move to, move to a vote. Is there, is there a motion, Mr. Clerk?
All right, so forgive me, this is my first time doing this, so I'm gonna, I, I am not up to the standards of Alan Kuscha here. All right, so, I move that the applicants at 217 Gray Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, be granted a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.3B, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for one-side setback in the R2 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a one-and-a-half-story detached garage on the property. Specifically, applicants have requested a side setback needing relief variance of 15 feet. The side setback proposed is 15 feet, and the side setback required per Table 2 is 30 feet.
All right, motion made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Steve, thank you for the second. We, I will go up the roll. Frank?
Aye.
This is actually on the application, we're approving the variance, motion is made to approve the variance.
So aye.
Aye. Michael?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Alexandria?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, the motion passes four to one. Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
I think I skipped, what did I skip over? Did 45 Russett come in, anybody?
So, they're not here, but they were continuing until October 5th.
Oh, they were?
And then since wanted to withdraw, so, but I do have a timestamp, time waiver going on.
To, and so October 5th, then?
October 5th.
Brilliant. Then we'll keep them on the agenda for October 5th. All right. Thank you for solving, solving that mystery for me.
Whether they like it or not.
And then we have 227 Berry is next. Brilliant. Come, come on up, please.
We filed for a waiver, a time waiver, till next meeting.
Thank you, thank you for that, thank you for appearing, I appreciate that. Any questions from the board, comments? If there is none, then we should have a motion to approve the, the continuance, and...
I have a question, just out of curiosity. So, I, I saw where, is your sewer septic, and where do you get your water from, a well?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, it's in the, it's in the backyard, yeah.
All right, thank you.
This is, this is for the screen porch in the back of the house.
Yeah, I, I was just intrigued, and curious minds want to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, so, motion to approve, can there be a motion to approve the continuance? Anybody?
So moved.
Thank you. Michael, is there a second?
Second.
All right, since this is a non-substantive thing, I'm just going to use the, the last, the last two members. Frank?
Aye.
Steve? Oh, actually, Michael, sorry.
Aye.
Ellen?
Yes.
Alexandria?
Aye.
I'm an aye, we are continued. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we have, unless I followed it up, 1004 Salem Street.
Should I read the legal notice?
Just a sec. That was exciting. Yes, if you wouldn't mind, Michael.
All right. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on Tuesdays, September 14th, 2021, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Carmen Henriquez Lopez and Francisco Bonilla for the property at 1004 Salem Street, map 104D, parcel 0031, North Andover, Massachusetts, 01845, in the R2 zoning district. The applicants are requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.3, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for one-side setback in the R2 zoning district for the purpose of constructing in addition onto the existing house with a two-car garage. Specifically, applicants have requested a side setback needing relief variance of 10.62 feet. The side setback proposed is 19.38 feet, and the side setback required per Table 2 is 30.0 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, for the, from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday, from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday, from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM, by the order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Koch, Jr., Esquire, Chairman.
Doesn't have the same flavor, but you'll get there.
No, no, and I, I don't have the gravitas.
True that. Thank you very much, Michael. Good evening, could you all introduce yourselves?
Good evening, I'm Carmen Henriquez Lopez.
Hi, I'm Francisco Bonilla.
Thank you very much. And tell us, tell us what's going on in your application.
We're here to request, respectfully request, a variance approval, as we believe through compliance with the current zoning standards would in reason prevent us from remaining in our home. I purchased this home in 1990, and my parents resided in it for a long time. I moved in there 10 years ago. We are in our 60s now, and we intend to reside in this home as our permanent residence, even after my husband retires as a physician. I'm, I'm a lawyer, but I don't work very often for years because of health issues. I believe the literal enforcement of the North Andover zoning law would result in substantial hardship, as I have numerous health issues which affect me while having to use stairs, as verified by, by two of my treating physicians at Massachusetts General Hospital, which letters of verifying my conditions I have with me, and I could show the board. It is our wish to have a first-floor master bedroom, laundry room, and a larger kitchen, as the current kitchen is extremely small, and was the original kitchen size when the property was used as a seasonal summer cabin back in 1948 and early 50s. We also reside with my 95-year-old father. My mother passed away last year, she also resided with us. My father is a stroke survivor and is wheelchair-bound. As a result of this tiny kitchen, that's really very tiny, my father cannot navigate in his wheelchair around, around our kitchen whatsoever. So he's sort of limited to the, to the space of the home. As owners, we just believe that we have not created this issue. The Town of North Andover approved this lot and its size decades ago, and the town also approved the existing small garage on the right side, which is even closer than the, it's even, the, the existing small little garage that we have is even closer to the adjacent lot than the proposed addition that we are submitting. It's also the same on the left side, the home is closer to the left side than, than the proposal that we are submitting. The need for this variance is a direct result of the shape and topography of the lot. The adjacent lots in our, in our area are much wider, we have a very narrow and long lot. And we believe that granting of this variance would not create a substantial detriment to the public. On the contrary, I think it would enhance the value of our property, which will enhance the neighborhood and its totality. Our home would be similar in size to those in the area. I understand the ordinance are meant to protect the character of the residential area where we reside. And I believe by us, by this variance being granted, it not, it not only meets our personal needs, but it, it enhances the neighborhood itself. Our, our plans will not result in a structure that would diminish the character or the quality of our neighborhood in any way. As owners of this property, we wish to remain in our home, and given the current high real estate prices and the total lack of first-floor master bedrooms in this area, because we have looked extensively, our only solution would be to build a master bedroom that I can be in, that I do not have to go up the stairs, including a laundry room, because right now it's in our basement, and going up and down the stairs with my health issues is very difficult for me. So we're trying to make it a place that I can continue to reside, not only now at 61, but in the future. We believe the present needs of our family, we are trying to do this to meet the present needs of our family and the medical conditions of two of our family members, that the present structure is just not viable for us right now. We believe the granting of this variance, again, will not affect our neighborhood, it is, it is our decision that this application merits that this honorable board exercise its discretion and grant us the requested variance. I thank you very much for your consideration.
So I'll, I'll start with, it's pretty clear that you read the code, and you, you tailored your application to address all the points, which not all applicants do. So I, I like to say it out loud, when somebody submits an application in a presentation like that, I want to acknowledge it, because we get so many, so many half-baked ideas that come before us, that it's a real, it's a breath of fresh air when somebody comes in fully prepared. So thank you for that. So with that, I'm going to punt to, you know, any of the board members, have any questions for this applicant?
Out of curiosity, the, the existing garage that you'll be eliminating, how far is that from the edge of the property? Because I think it's considerably closer than the variance you're asking for, is it not?
Yeah, it's not marked on the plot plan. You, you know, just eyeballing it, where the corner, where that 19.38 feet is, I'd say it's probably 40% of that, so, you know, maybe no, no more than 10 feet or less from the existing line.
Yeah, I would say it looks like it's about 7 or 18.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the, our neighbors have no issues whatsoever with us doing what we did. They have reviewed all, all the plans with us, and, like I said, our additions are, it's going to be even farther than the existing structures right now.
And that's another pleasant surprise, I didn't, didn't say that earlier, but now it's time. It's always a pleasant surprise when somebody comes in for relief, which is less than what, less than what the existing conditions require.
It looks like your driveway is your back out of your garage, or, well, depending on whether you pull in headfirst, or however you park it in the garage, but it seems like it's kind of tight.
Very tight, a very long and narrow driveway.
Yeah.
It's very tight to get in and out of there.
I mean, the new, the proposed one, in a second, that's still going to be tight.
Well, I think, I think it's going to have actually more of a, a turn than, than we have, it's going to be more towards the back of our home, rather than where the old garage is.
It is, it is a little tight, admittedly, but...
Because you only have 20, less than 20-foot setback between the edge of the garage and the property line, so the driveway itself needs to be, you know, less than that as well.
So, we don't envision the dimensions of the driveway changing, actually, even though the garage isn't there now, it's clear from the way we've gone in and out of the existing garage, that it will be feasible to head in or back in, either way.
And we also, because we just have a very small structure now, which used to be like, like a shed, like a, I, I had a, a door put in, because I can't clean snow because of my muscle issues, so I park now under, under there, but my husband has to kind of turn and park outside, and he has back issues, so we're trying to, I usually park in Lawrence when there's a big snowstorm, because he has a tough time shoveling lots of snow, so it's been like a real problem, you know, with having the situation that we have now.
But to your question, I, I don't think the way the plot is laid out now, that there will be any difficulty getting in and out of the garage, and I don't see that there's going to be any need to change the structure of the driveway.
So, I, I was impressed with your, your present situation. I was surprised with the age of your house, because your, when I, your house is very modern, very nice-looking. And when I looked at your garage, boy, I haven't seen a garage that small. Certainly, it doesn't fit with your house. Okay, and so, and so I, I think you're, you, what you're asking for is very reasonable. And when I look at your property, and the, your house and your garage are recessed from Salem, quite a distance? I mean, and, and then, okay, and then your lot, so, I, I just, the only thing I want to say is, I think your request is very appropriate and very reasonable.
I, I, I did a lot of work, so 10 years ago, 12 years ago, I got divorced from my children's father, and my mother and father were in very poor, poor health, so I actually moved in to take care of them, and I added a second floor. It was just a small ranch, so I really have put a lot of money in renovating it 10 years ago, actually. So, you know, we've looked at homes, and I would have to add a master bedroom, and homes that are 25, 30 years old, that we have to spend money on a new roof, new heating system, and the way the prices are now, we just said, that's just outrageous, when I've already put all this money into this property, and I, I don't want to leave there, you know? We have the land, and we have the funds to make an addition, so that I can live comfortably, and my father can get around the house comfortably.
And I don't think there's any version of any level of construction where you wouldn't be asking for a variance on setback, right? Like, this, this property, for better or for worse, is, is, you know, it's barely 60 feet wide, which is literally, which you'd need to put a pencil in there, so...
It's a horrible lot.
So it, it's, it, I mean, I don't know if it's so much a horrible lot, is it's just, it's not well-suited to the current zoning laws, right? It is that it's not, it's a very thin, narrow strip of land that is, you do definitely have the topology issue there going for you.
Ellen or Alexandria? Any thoughts?
I'm quiet as a mouse tonight.
I'm good.
Thank you both. Looking up and down the table, anything else from the board, or shall we move to, actually, anybody from the gallery interested in being heard on this matter? Seeing and hearing none, returning back to the board, unless there are any further questions, we...
I move that we close, close public comment and move to deliberation.
Is there a second? Thank you, seconded by Steve, I'll go up the, who is voting on this one? Jen?
Steve and Frank.
Steve and Frank, we'll go up the roll, this, again, this is just to close public comment, move to deliberations. Frank?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Alexandria?
Yeah.
I'm an aye, so we are, we have successfully navigated that. So deliberation, thoughts from the board, anybody, everybody?
I've expressed my thoughts.
Thank...
I think this is what the process is made for, is a situation exactly like this.
Thank you, thank you, Michael. Frank, anything? Ellen? Alexandria?
No, I'm good.
I'd share everybody's comments, too, the, the narrowness of this lot, the shape of this lot, you know, you couldn't put a doghouse on this thing without needing a variance, and since they are improving the setback conditions, feels like an awfully easy vote on my part. So I will shut up and ask, Mr. Clerk, shall there be a motion to approve?
All right, that's the Berry Street one, apologies. Ah, here we go. All right. So I move that the applicants at 1004 Salem Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, be granted a variance pursuant to the Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195.73, dash 7.3, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for one-side setback in the R2 zoning district for the purpose of constructing in addition onto the existing house with a two-car garage. Specifically, that they be granted a side setback needing a relief variance of 10.62 feet. The side setback proposed is 19.38 feet, and the side setback required per Table 2 is 30.0 feet.
And that would be, I let you go last time, because I forgot about it, too, would you identify the plans?
Oh, yes. As according to plans, let's see, what do, where do I...
Yeah, you just kind of make it up.
Okay, so as, as the, as according to the plan of land for 1004 Salem Street, North Andover, prepared for Francisco Antonio Bonilla and Carmen M. Henriquez Lopez by Merrimack Valley Engineering Services, on the date of August 10th, 2021. And referencing that, as well as the... And referencing that, as well as the, uh, the architectural plans, uh, grant, designed by Soft Plan Architectural Design Software, oh, by Kellaway Drafting Service, apologies. Designed by Kellaway Drafting Service, is there a date on these?
August 17th.
Uh, on August, on August 17th, 2021, uh, pages one through four.
Let's take just one of them.
Or one, is it just one and two?
One and two.
I think just pages one and two of four.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Uh, so we are going to be going up roll, this is a motion to approve the variance. Frank?
Uh, yes.
Steve?
Aye.
Ellen?
Yes, if I mind you, yes.
Thanks, Alexandria?
Yeah.
And I'm an aye, so you are approved, thank you both very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Uh, the last item on the agenda is just a 40B notice regarding, uh, notice of foreclosure, 180 Chickering Road, it's nothing that we, we, uh, take any action on, it is just a notice that we get by, I think, an ordinance somewhere. Uh, with that there being no further business on the agenda, we should have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Michael, is there a second?
I second.
Was that Alexandria's?
I second, I second, I second, yes.
Alexandria, thank you.
Somebody's happy to second that.
Motion made and seconded, I'm just going to be random on this one. Frank?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Alexandria?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
And Michael?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.